Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. Information on how to watch, attend, and participate, as well as agendas, minutes, and recordings, can be found on Broomfield's website at broomfield.org/councilmeetings. The public may also participate in public comment, either in person or by calling 855-695-3744 and pressing *3 to be placed in the queue for comment. Screeners will ask callers for their first and last name, neighborhood, and the agenda item the caller would like to comment on. If you'd like to speak on more than one item on tonight's agenda, you'll need to press *3 each time to be placed back in the queue for comment. Public comment will be limited to 90 minutes total per item. The first 1 through 15 participants in the queue have three minutes to speak. The next 16 through 25 have two minutes. And if time remains, the next 26-plus participants in the queue have one minute to speak. For our hard-of-hearing residents present, we have wireless headsets available in the back of the council chambers from our AV team. The City Council regular meeting is called to order. No council members are absent, and a quorum of the council is present. Will everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In an effort to keep order for tonight's meeting, I asked council members to limit their comments to five minutes. If council members are given an opportunity to speak for a second time on an item, they should limit their comments to two minutes. We'll plan on a 10-minute break at approximately 8:00 PM. We will begin with council's review and approval of this evening's agenda. Council may add or remove items from the consent agenda, or council may revise the order of business for the meeting. Does any member of the council have any comments or questions regarding this evening's agenda? Are there any objections to this agenda being approved? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. The first item under petitions and communications this evening is an announcement of the events and activities planned for CSU Extension's 2024 Earth Day Celebration. Will the CSU Extension representatives here please come to the podium? And welcome. Feel free to introduce yourselves and tell us about the Earth Day activities.
Yeah, thank you so much. My name is Carrie Rollins. I am the Front Range Regional Director for Colorado State University Extension. And I'm here tonight to thank you all for considering our intergovernmental agreement that we're here to renew our relationship, our long partnership that we've had since Broomfield was newly a city and county, I think back in 2002. And I just wanted to acknowledge Director Catherine Lineup and how great it's been to work with her in renewing and penciling out that IGA for your consideration tonight. Since we have a couple of minutes, I also wanted to share a little bit with you, very little, about CSU Extension and then turn it over to your County Extension Director here, Sarah Schwag as well. So if we can go next slide, that would be great. So in the Front Range, you all obviously are in the Front Range of Colorado, and you're in the Front Range District for Extension as well. And there's about 10 counties in the Front Range Extension District from Larimer down to El Paso. And overall, we have about 80 employees in the Front Range District. Next slide, please. We're in the Office of Engagement and Extension at Colorado State University, and that gives us the opportunity to partner internally with our various other sister departments under engagement and extension to better serve the communities in the Front Range and across Colorado via our extension services. And those things include CSU Spur, which I know some of your staff were able to attend. It's in Denver. We have the Sturm Collaboration Campus down in Douglas County as another example of opportunities and ways that we're trying to engage communities across the board. And then everything from pre-K to older adults as far as programming, to educational programming, to serve community needs and address issues that people might be having. Next slide. The biggest way that we partner with counties is through the intergovernmental agreements. So that's why we're here tonight. All of our educational programming in each and every county across the Front Range, we use community needs assessments, and that's true here in Broomfield as well. And we partner with our cities and counties in various ways. And I've got a couple of bullets up there. I won't read them to you. A lot of you have probably heard of our two biggest programs, 4H Positive Youth Development. Anybody, a former 4H'er in the crowd? Not here, not yet? All right, yay, thank you for that. And we also have Colorado Master Gardeners, but we have a lot of other programs in health and wellbeing and natural resources, et cetera, et cetera, that we can offer to our cities and counties as well. And we support our community members, industry partners, and organizations through volunteerism and other ways of engaging. And here to talk a little bit more about the, excuse me, opportunities here in Broomfield is Sarah Schwag.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Good evening, I'm Sarah Schwag. I am your County Extension Director here in Broomfield. Whether or not you... Can we next slide, please? Whether or not you are familiar with our local programs, I bet you recognize some of these. We have Educational Gardens. We offer hands-on workshops. They include the Vegetable Garden over at Brunner Farmhouse. We have public classes in English, Spanish, American Sign Language, the beautiful Xeriscap Demonstration Garden just across the parking lot here. And we have Aeroponic Towers at Fish, the lobby of the library, and used at school programs. One is pictured there over at Emerald where it currently is being used. Our wonderful Colorado Master Gardener volunteers answer hundreds of home gardener questions on the horticulture helpline each year. And our staff offer consultations to local businesses, HOAs, and other organizations. And a new-ish project for us, a couple of years old, is the Broomfield Seed Library. You may have seen it's on the second floor of the Broomfield Library. Next slide, please. And with that, I would love to invite you all to an event that actually started a couple of years ago as the opening of the Seed Library and has really grown with the help of a number of city and county of Broomfield teams and partners. This year especially, the Sustainability Team has been a close partner in planning it, and we've been able to expand the activities. So a community seed swap is kind of how it started. This is the third annual Seed Swap. We'll have hands-on activities, including seed starting. We'll have the first free volunteer-led bike repair station, which we're super excited about. And lots of, again, CCB teams and community partners that are working on issues around sustainability. So we hope to see you there. If I can answer any questions, please let us know.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that recap and the upcoming events. We do take public comments on all matters before the council. So if anyone would like to speak on this topic, please come on up to the podium. Seeing none, I don't see anybody on the phone. Questions from comment and comments from council are next. Does any member of council have any questions or comments? Mayor Potem Shaaf?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to CSU Extension for all these great programs. Thank you for your partnership, and I'd be Marimé's. Go Rams!
Well, now you're gonna start a rivalry thing. Anyone else? Councilmember Henkel?
Thank you, I concur. Also, go Rams! Huge fan, and in fact, we just did an academic visit up at CSU for my daughter. So very exciting. Did this start, I'm wondering, in 2021? What a tough year to start this, am I right? Because 2020 was COVID. The Seed Swap? Yeah, I'm just looking at this. The Seed Swap, Seed Start?
2022.
Oh, was it 2021?
Yeah, so we had one, the first one in 2022, and this is the third.
Okay, nice. We did something with the library, though. I felt like we did a drive-through and we picked up seed.
Oh, we sure did. Yes. That was, I suppose, a precursor to it, actually. Yeah, we did a drive-through, seed giveout, that's right.
That's pretty amazing. Well, every year we give my daughter some plants because she loves plants and animals, probably more than people. And so I really appreciate all of this work. And I really appreciate that bike repair. So many people who, particularly those who rely on their bikes to even get to work and back, really do rely on, you know, the availability of their bike to work, right? And it's very expensive sometimes to even get their bike somewhere to get it repaired. But I really look forward to that program. Are you guys working with Broomfield Bikes on this too, by chance, or partnering with them?
It is an organization housed in Longma. And I was just gonna say kudos all to Sustainability for bringing that particular activity in.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've seen it in action other places, and they organize the volunteers, bring their own. And also, you may have seen, there's a call for local community volunteers to sign up to help if they have expertise.
Okay, great. Yeah, if you guys want to look into it. I know Broomfield Bikes, I'm sure, would be, love to be a part of something like this and even help get the word out for it. That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councilmember questions or comments? No, well, just want to say thank you so much. We're excited about our continuing partnership and all the wonderful programming that you're providing. And I'd like to encourage everyone to attend our Earth Day Celebration Saturday, April 20th at the library. Thanks, y'all. Next, we have a proclamation declaring April 28th through May 4th as Broomfield Business Week. Well, Mr. Schreier and any other representatives here to accept the proclamation, please come meet Mayor Potem Shaaf at the podium. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'll summarize the proclamation, then I'll turn it over to you guys to make some remarks. This proclamation aims to celebrate Broomfield's many local businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. The city and county of Broomfield supports local businesses through our enhanced Broomfield and Entrepreneur Micro Grant Programs, which have awarded over $2 million since 2005 to aid in expansion efforts as Broomfield businesses create jobs and generate activity for the benefit of our economy and our vitality. The city and county of Broomfield, along with its partners, the Broomfield Area Chamber of Commerce, will be hosting workshops as part of Broomfield Business Week to support and grow local businesses. For more than 50 years, the President of the United States has issued a proclamation announcing Small Business Week, recognizing the critical contributions of American small business owners. From the storefront shops that anchor our community to the high-tech startups that keep us on the cutting edge, our businesses are the backbone of our community and the cornerstone of our economy. Therefore, as mayor, I hereby declare and proclaim April 28th through May 4th as Broomfield Business Week and encourage the residents of our community to support Broomfield businesses. Would the representatives like to make any comments?
Yes, I'd just like to thank Sarah Schaffner with Digital Frontier for being here to accept this proclamation tonight. Very wonderful that she could be here and do that for us. And then I'd also like to remind the community that we have six workshops for the Broomfield Business Week that we're running from Monday, April 29th through Thursday, May 2nd. We're covering topics like the Family Medical Leave Insurance Program, Talent Pipeline Report, Capital Resources, IT Security, Marketing for Businesses, and Negotiating Leases. Those were things that we hear about a lot from businesses. So we wanted to make sure that there were educational opportunities for our businesses. With that, I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Thank you, Mayor, and council people for the opportunity to be here. I am, it is an honor to accept the proclamation on behalf of small businesses of Broomfield. I have also had the privilege of being a recipient of the grant program. And I cannot tell you how meaningful that is to companies like mine. There are always more things to do than there is money to fund. And so the opportunity to tap into programs like that is truly a difference-maker for us. So thank you for that, and thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you so much. Mr. Ronaselli, would you like to provide some remarks?
I would love to, thank you, Mayor. I actually wrote it down this time.
That's rare, really unscripted.
I'm usually, so it'll be better tonight, I think. Mayor Castriata and city council members and city and county staff, on behalf of the Broomfield Chamber of Commerce, I want to express our gratitude to the city and county of Broomfield for this proclamation declaring the week of April 28th as Broomfield Business Week. It's a testament to the incredible impact our businesses have in our community. It is worth noting that 87% of our chamber members are small enterprises with 25 or fewer employees. 90% of our members have fewer than 50 employees. And those statistics reflect the diversity and resilience of our business community and showcase that every business, regardless of size, plays a crucial role in shaping our local economy. Now, having said that, we deeply value all of our businesses, from those startups to established organizations, from solopreneurs to large corporations. Each one uniquely contributes to the vibrancy and success of our area. The proclamation underscores the importance of supporting and celebrating our local businesses, and we're grateful to the city and county for the recognition of that significance. So we look forward to working with the city and county on the events of Broomfield Business Week. And I want to thank you all, as always, for the longstanding spirit of collaboration that we share. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So would anyone like to comment on this item? We do have comments available if you would like to speak or be heard. Then we'll go to council. Any members of council have any questions or comments on this proclamation? I just want to say, thank you for the fabulous Safeway wrap. It looks awesome. So the Digital Frontier was the local business that put the graphics on the Safeway building so people can see what's coming soon. So it looks really wonderful. I always turn my head to look at it, and I get a lot less questions about what's going on with the Safeway. So thank you. Thank you for joining us, y'all. All right, before I turn it over to my colleagues for their reports or updates, the 2024 First Quarter Expense Report for Elected Officials was provided on this evening's agenda under Council Member Reports. Does any member of council have any reports or updates this evening? That's awesome, okay. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Marsh Holson. I'm still getting used to that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so the last couple of weeks, I attended the Community Solutions meeting, monthly meeting, quarterly meeting. We heard updates from Senator Winter and Representative Lindstedt on transportation-related bills, including 184. We also heard from RGD on their efforts. And hopefully, we'll get, you know, more as the legislative session finalizes. I also attended the NACO Finance Pension Intergovernmental Relations Monthly Meeting. We talked about the efforts in Congress to expand the child tax credit, the bipartisan efforts that's ongoing, but so far, nothing has happened with that. And then this morning, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Coffee and Conversations that they hold monthly. It was a great event. If, and nobody's ever been to Ziggy's Coffee on 120th and Sheridan. I encourage you to go get your coffee there. Great small business in our community. They had questions on minimum wage, of course, housing, and the Broomfield Town Square. So feel of those questions from them. There's about eight, I think, people came to that. So it was a good opportunity. And then one last thing. On Thursday, the 18th, a week and a half from today, Councilmember Win and I are holding a Ward 1 community meeting at 6:30 PM in the Greenway Park Clubhouse. So anyone from Ward 1, anyone's welcome to come, but if you're from Ward 1, definitely, please come.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Anyone else? I think the highlight of my week last week was attending the Broomfield High School Women's Empowerment Conference. They have this every year, and it's, these students are spending time on a Saturday to learn about career options and talk to folks from, you know, interesting segments of life. And I got to do a workshop on female leadership. And these kids are so engaged. They really want to get involved, and they were really happy to learn about our teen council applications opening up April 15th, and that we have youth positions on our boards and commissions. So it was just really inspiring and filled my cup to be able to share what we do with, you know, our youngsters and see that they're so interested. All right, then, moving on. We do have public comment on this. So if anyone would like to speak on the reports, now's the time. I don't see anybody online, okay. We'll now continue with regular public comment. So this is general public comment, and an opportunity for the public to comment on matters other than what's on the agenda listed elsewhere. So would anyone like to comment in general? Quiet night. All right, then nobody's on the phone. Next, did I miss something? It's just, I just announced it's there. That's it, we don't go through it. It's okay, right? Yeah, okay, thanks. Thanks, Patrick. Good eye. So now, next under report, staff is going to provide the council with an update on the Event Center demolition timeline. Council has a copy of the Agenda Memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council and community. Katie Allen, co-director of Community Development and our city-county engineer, is going to give a very brief update of where we are and where we're going and the timeframe. Katie, and if you could end with the Broomfield Voice page for all those folks that are listening that can also kind of track where we are as we move forward on this progress.
Sure, thank you, Manager Hoffman. So we are currently in the middle of contractor selection. We're wrapping up step two of a two-step process. We issued a public request for statements of interest and qualifications. We received seven, and those were reviewed, and we have shortlisted that field to four contractors. We've issued a formal request for proposals. Those proposals are due this Friday, April 12th. And those will be reviewed, and we have interviews scheduled for April 25th and/or April 26th. So shortly after that, we will have identified our recommended contractor. And presuming our pre-construction, or in this case, pre-deconstruction services amount is less than 200,000, we will negotiate an agreement for the city manager's signature, hopefully, in early to mid-May. So this summer, we will spend time with the contractor really putting together the job. So understanding where all the remaining fixtures, furniture, and equipment will go, whether that's auction or some other method, how the building will be dismantled safely, structurally, what the traffic control looks like, what are the recycle options, and so on and so forth. By August, we hope to have an update for council, and that might include alternatives to review based on diversion rates and costs. And then we are shooting for a guaranteed maximum price proposal in September and hoping to get work going in late October. In the staff report, we talk about wrapping up October 2025. We've been told, at least initially, that our schedule is very generous. So hopefully, that'll shorten up, and we'll have more information in August for you. So that's about it. And Manager Hoffman did mention Broomfield Voice. I think it's just a Broomfield webpage. I don't want to misspeak. We have a Broomfield webpage with information about the project. People can go to to see where we are and what the next steps are. And without, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. We'll now proceed with public comments. If there's any comments on the First Bank Center demolition, now's the time. Not seeing any, any questions or comments from council. I'm waiting. Ah, there we go, Councilmember Lim.
Yes, I did look at the webpage for the Broomfield, the Event Center redevelopment. And that led me to the Broomfield Municipal Code. It refers to, "We intend to adhere to standard procedures for handling items owned by CCOB in accordance with Broomfield Municipal Code 3-12." So I guess, considering this is novel, I think, for Broomfield to be considering some level of deconstruction, I guess my question is, does our municipal code allow for that process? Or does something have to be changed? I mean, I looked at the sales procedure, and it seems sort of geared towards our previous methods of getting rid of property that may not fit deconstruction. That was my question.
Well, the materials in the building are owned by the Urban Renewal Authority. And I don't know if that changes anything, but I'm gonna have to dive into those details during that pre-construction. I'm just gonna use the general term, pre-construction phase with the attorney staff.
Councilmember Lim, if I could just, if I could clarify that question, are you asking about the specificity of the Broomfield Municipal Code as it, with regards to deconstruction with demolishing a building?
Like, it's for the sales procedure. It said, "Property will be sold at a public sale," and then there's, or a public auction. And I was having trouble without knowing completely about deconstruction. Sure. Thinking that recycled materials are gonna go into auction and things like that. And I just wondered if the sales procedure needs, our code in any way, needs to be expanded to allow for deconstruction.
I'm gonna ask our attorney if the municipal code and the applicability to Bura, if there is a difference.
There is, there is a difference to Bura, but really, what we're talking about is a difference between personal property and construction goods. So if there were more personal property to be found on the site, we would follow Chapter 312. There would be surplus property. But I think what you're talking about is something that wouldn't necessarily traditionally be seen as surplus property, like an extra dais or a bunch of chairs. Can we, can we get back to council on that point?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Is that all, councilmember?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Cohen?
Just quickly, I was just interested, since Mr. Romine is here, is there any updates on the parallel process of what comes after the demolition? And any progress in terms of what might go on that space?
As Mr. Romine looks over at City Manager Hoffman, we're in the process of,
okay.
We're, we're, we're working on that, Councilmember Cohen. More to come.
He got some steps in, at least.
Too soon. Okay, any other councilmember questions or comments? Right, sounds like it's moving along. Thank you very much, Ms. Allen and Mr. Romine. Manager Hoffman. So, Manager Hoffman or Ms. Rogers, do you have any additional reports this evening?
I do not.
I do not, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you both. Council's consideration of the consent items is next. The clerk will read all of the consent agenda items by title, and there'll be one opportunity for public comments and council questions and comments. Will the clerk please read Agenda Item 6A through 6D by title?
6A, Approval of Minutes from the March 19th, 2024 Special City Council Meeting and the March 26th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting. 6B, Resolution 2024-35, Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement between the City and County of Broomfield and Colorado State University for the operation of the Broomfield Colorado State University Extension Office. 6C, Resolution Number 2024-43, Authorizing the Second Amendment of the Kimley-Horn Associates Incorporated for the U.S. State Highway 7 Intramodular Improvement Project. 6D, Resolution Number 2024-39, Approving Jefferson County's Empire West Subdivision Adjustments 3, Lot 2C Site Development Plan.
Thank you. We'll now proceed with public comments, starting with in-person. If you'd like to be heard, please make your way to the podium. State your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Roxy Jul-Aulakmar. I'm commenting about 6B. I know that the extension unit does great work in our community. But over the years, all I've heard is complaining that the library doesn't have space. The extension was moved out. This building was put into the library. I feel that the extension should be in the facility unit buildings instead of in our library. They could still do all their projects and stuff at the library if they wanted to. The library isn't really being used as a library if it's being used as office building or as a daycare center or things of that nature. And they want a larger library, and they want another library to be built up north. So the more things that we can get out of the library and give it more space to be used for what a library is supposed to be used for, I think would be better. This is my opinion. But I've heard from many people that if they really need the space, then you should not have things into the library that really don't need to be in the library.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see any online. Let me double-check one more time. No. So next is councilmember questions, comments. No. So next is council member questions, comments. Any member of council have any questions or comments? Nope. Okay. Before asking for a motion, I want to remind everyone that Item 6B contains an intergovernmental agreement which requires two-thirds approval of council. Is there a motion by council that the recommendations contained in the staff reports for the consent agenda items be approved? Councilmember Ward.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mayor Protem.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Well, I'm excited about the Highway 7 improvements, so yay. Thanks for that. Okay. Well, then, council, please cast your vote electronically. Our council members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen, and that passes unanimously. Our first item under action items this evening is an ordinance amending and restating certain agreements related to Arista parking garage bonds. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor. And now, Mr. Romine, without a hitch in his giddyup, and Carl Front, our senior attorney, is also here. They've been methodical. This is, this looks like a very simple memorialization from a legal perspective, but it really does bring a 20-year conclusion to the Event Center and the associated tri-party parking agreement with that. Mr. Romine.
Thank you, Manager Hoffman, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. So we, the memo kind of lays everything out, and as a, as a reminder to you all, this was something we've covered both in January of 2023 and then again in December of 2023. So we hinted and kind of described what was coming. This is the official, beginning of those official acts. And so if you recall, in December of 2023, some of you may have looked at that briefing that we provided. We discussed a $1.1 million expenditure that would be incurred as part of this that is being paid underneath all, all of these. And so that's what this is, and that's the reference. Next, next slide, please. I'm gonna run through the financial side, and then Carl will walk through very briefly the various legal documents that are all within it. The one thing I would note to you all is this is the first reading. The second reading in public hearing will be on April 30th is when we've scheduled it. At the same time, the Bura Board will be considering an action related to this. And so there'll be two actions coming at the end of April following up on this. So again, right now, the, the parking garage and all that facility has, there was $11 million, $11.6 million worth of debt that was issued in 2020, as you can see, in A and B bonds. Current balance on those is estimated to be just over $9 million. So that's being, being paid for and continuing. The Bura payment is roughly one point, just over $1 million, so that's a portion of it. And then at the same time, you can see how that will work its way down as time goes. And so those are related to that portion of the payments. And as you can see, it starts out at $1 million for the next three years, and then it drops down. In 2039, it'll be about $100,000. So it's, it's a declining balance at the same time. So a little bit different than what you oftentimes see in, in payments, in bond payments. Next slide, please. The key here is discussed was is we have, we have four obligations collectively to make these payments. One is the ALID, which is the, the facility, and it's the Arista District that's related to the parking garage and the Transportation District. RTD has some tax rebate and payments as part of the tri-party agreement, as Manager Hoffman pointed out. Bura had a responsibility, and then there was the Event Center. So while the Event Center was running, there was payments that were being required to be made by the Event Center to help pay for some of the parking. Obviously, with the shutdown of the Event Center, those obligations are no longer being paid. And so as part of that, if you recall in, in that conversation, we suggested that we would be taking on that obligation. And when I say we, I mean Bura, would be taking on that obligation. So that's what really is coming through. So if the difference between the first section, which is the amended section, what we're going to, and the lower section is bullet points three and four below are now incorporated into the bullet point one. So this is cleaning up the documents. We've been working with the bondholders in the district. We've been working through all of this to make sure that they understood exactly what they're doing. And in all of these cases, both the senior bondholders for it, which are in the primary position, they aware of this, they know what's going on, and they have suggested this is a smart and positive action. So this is just bringing all of that together and the beginning of seeing those, those various instruments that we'll be bringing forward. At that, I'm gonna turn it over to Carl, who can talk through briefly what those, what those documents are for tonight.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Carl Front, Senior Attorney. So tonight, we are looking at Proposed Ordinance 2231, and this ordinance will, if approved, would approve an annually renewable reserve fund, which is an obligation of the city, not of Bura, to support the parking bond debt. When the parking bonds, when the parking garage was built in 2005, 2006 timeframe, the city made what's referred to as a moral obligation to support that debt in case the revenues from the Event Center and from Bura were insufficient in order to cover those bond payments. This agreement tonight is a renew, is a renewal of that moral obligation and cleans up the references to the various pledges of revenue that were made to essentially make it so that Bura is just responsible for the remaining shortfall of any balance towards that debt payment on an annual basis. The moral obligation, what that does is it obligates the city manager to include sufficient revenue to refill that reserve fund should any dollars have been drawn out of it on an annual basis and present that to council for approval. Council has the ability to say yes or to say no to that on an annual basis. And so that's what this proposed agreement does. With that, you know, I, I think I mentioned it was a critical component of the financing from the beginning with the Event Center that made these bonds marketable, and that continues to be the case as we talk with the bondholders and with the trustee. Really, the only reason they're willing to work with us is because of that moral obligation. And so that concludes staff presentation. We will be happy to take any questions.
To simplify, Mayor, we've already been paying this. This is simply allowing us to be in control of bringing the interest rate down, and it also allows us not to have to grovel, as we have been for the last two and a half years, to, to make sure that we are able to get insurance for the Event Center, which becomes increasingly difficult when you don't have revenue. So essentially, moral obligation is something that few councils, even fewer staff, would ever recommend entering into. So this, this, you won't be seeing any recommendations.
Can I ask a question? Do you all mind? Do we have to honor it from 2005?
We absolutely do. And, and the two primary reasons are, is we know that we are good for it. We may not, we may not like it, but essentially, a moral obligation is really the foundational credibility of the person or the body that's giving it. So we, we need to continue to, to meet that and not call it a moral obligation anymore, but assume what we've been assuming for the last 22 years and get this bad boy paid off.
Thank you, Manager Hoffman. Well, we, we do have a public comment opportunity. If anyone would like to be heard on this, please come up to the podium. Let's check online. Nobody? Thank you. All right. Questions from council are next. Are there any members of council? Councilmember Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few questions. The schedule that you had up on the slide a minute ago was till 2039 before it's paid off. Is that correct?
So I'm gonna, either Carl or Mr. Front or, or Mr. Romine. So these are two different bonds. So before everybody gets really uptight about the, myself included, so the bonds that are for the Event Center are paid off in 2030. We have the balloon payment. These parking obligation bonds are on a different time schedule. Mr. Romine?
And that's exactly correct. And just as a reference, the bonds for the Event Center, which are Bura bonds, and we are, there's enough revenue that's being generated at the URA to pay that and actually also make sure it pays this additional $1.1 million that we're talking about. So all of this has been accounted for. There's no additional dollars being asked for, and it's coming from that source. And as a point of reference, just because I suspect some people are wondering, right now, the Bura bonds for the Event Center are roughly about $30 million, a little bit more. And where are current on those? The lump sum payment is $10 million, and there are reserves in place so that we are completely whole and ready to move forward with all of that. So financially, it's all been accounted for, and we have integrity around it.
But yes, it's 2039.
Okay. So the second question on that is, do we have the ability to pay that off sooner? And if we did, would we save money?
The, the, we have contemplated that at different times. One of the things, and this, I guess, goes a little bit back to Councilmember Cohen's question from an earlier presentation, and that is, is the way that the additional years would likely be consumed is, is this creates some opportunities for a development on this site. And so they would be getting and helping to support the parking and thus being able to get the parking for that development. So that what we see, what we believe is going to happen, as, as we move forward on the, on the redevelopment of that Event Center site, the former site, that he, that the development itself will want to, will take on these obligations for those future years. And so they're really minor, but at the same time, it gives them a first foot into the conversation around parking and being able to utilize a parking garage for specific purposes.
And that was my next question is, so will this allow, us paying this bond, would that allow us to use the parking garage as a?
The parking garage is-
Part of the redevelopment?
Yeah, the parking garage is a public garage. There were spaces allocated as part of this agreement formally to the Event Center. And so what we'll see is some reordering on that and work around. Once we get a developer identified, we suspect they're gonna be engaged with the Arista District to be able to talk about how that parking can go forward. And again, that parking garage was built roughly 20 years ago, 15 to 20 years ago. So that's a very affordable set of parking in today's, in this day and age. So it's actually an asset for the development of that site.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just to kind of piggyback a little bit on the end of that, what you were talking about, Mr. Romine, about the value of the parking lot. Is there a current, you know, not only value to it, but what, are we tracking any usage? And it used to be paid parking, didn't it? And then now it's not. Is there any plans on it being paid parking, or what does that look like?
Again, the, the parking garage is owned by the district.
Yeah.
And so this property is within that district, obviously, as well as all the other property in that area, or most of the property in that area. There's, it is not very full most days. It was really built to serve both the needs of RTD for their parking needs as well as for the Event Center on high, high-volume days. And so there is extra spaces in there. Our rough estimate, Carl had done some calculations, and we estimate this having a value of around $10,000 to $15,000 per parking spaces. As a note to most people, I think, as we've been talking about parking in other places, oftentimes, we talk about $35,000 to $40,000 for a parking space in a structured garage. So this is, becomes an asset in a, in a kind of really positive manner. So I think that answers your question.
But it's, Councilmember, it's not our asset.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Any other council member question?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to clarify. So on the bottom of the slide that's up right now, the annual payment schedule, 2025 to 2028, 1.04 million is not the total amount for those years. It is per year.
Those are annual dates, or annual amounts.
Great. Just wanted to clarify that. And the other question I had is, is when we're talking about revenues that pay off these bonds, these are coming for, these are coming from what sources now that the Event Center is, Event Center revenue is gone?
The urban renewal area is actually the, is the basis for the payments on these bonds, and that is property tax and sales tax that's been pledged. That includes both the City and County's participation in that URA, as well as Jefferson County School District. And so those are the funds that are coming forward, and that's what's paying back the bonds for the Event Center, as well as providing this additional revenue to pay these expenditures. The, the URA has now been able to cover the bond payments, the primary bond payments for the Event Center for a little over three years. And there's enough revenue now to cover all of this, and we anticipate that to continue to be. So it's, it's self-sustaining, if you will. And again, those ran out in 3031, but then that, that final asset, which is really what we're talking about with these last payments at the very bottom, those, there'd be enough revenue that either be generated from excess during this period of time to be able to make those final payments, or as we move forward toward a redevelopment and for that to become an asset.
And, and to, to follow up on that, so we anticipate that we aren't going to be using general fund dollars to pay these bonds off, that this will actually be generated by the Bura?
No, this is, yeah, again, it's a Bura obligation, is not a City and County general fund obligation.
Thank you.
You can't, you can't mesh those two. You can't mesh general, general fund with Bura fund. It's much like the enterprise fund. They stay in their individual buckets. And to, to simplify, it's the Arista area that we've been banking on for the sales tax primarily for 15 years. And so again, it's, it's good for us to remember that example when we're talking about any other URAs, whether it's a URA up in baseline or a URA for Broomfield Town Square. What you hope it generates, you can't count on it generating it. You just don't think that it's gonna be 15 years behind where, where you had hoped it would be.
Okay. So just let me clarify. So when we were talking pre-2022, it was the URAs outside of the Arista URA that was funding these bonds.
That's exactly right.
Wasn't the general fund.
Correct.
Great. So that was where the moral obligation came from, was that we had to use other URA money to pay off those bonds, whereas now the Arista URA is going to be paying these bonds off.
It's, 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 it's not the, the, the moral obligation wasn't connected to that URA not generating. It wasn't an afterthought. So when the financing first was on the table, when they were talking about the Event Center, and the three parties came together and said, yes, we love this. It's a great idea. Everybody's in. And everybody was anticipating that it was gonna take off, much like Center Street in baseline. You, you, you have high hopes that it's gonna really, it's gonna happen. When you think it's gonna happen, it's gonna generate more than you're thinking it's gonna generate. When that doesn't occur, particularly on the front end, a moral obligation is simply saying, if you and I are partners, I say to you, you're in, and you say, yes, I'm gonna do my very best to pay you. And I say, you know what? Do your very best, but if you can't cover it, I got you for a certain period of time. Problem with the moral obligation is, once you're on the hook for it, then it's you. It's just like you're a cosigner, and the person you're cosigning with can't come up with the money. Legally, they come after you. And that's the obligation. So it's, it's not one doesn't impact the other. It wasn't a moral obligation because the URA wasn't producing. It was a moral obligation because our partners at the time said, we can't, we can't now, we don't have the funds, whether the district isn't generating them, or the developer wasn't generating them, or the sales tax weren't generating them.
Great. Thank you.
And Councilmember Shaff, to supplement on that, I, I think the difference here is that those additional URA funds, which you asked about, we, Bura used those in order to prevent a draw on the reserve fund under the, under the city's moral obligation. So the general fund was never utilized because they looked to those additional URA funds.
From other URAs, though, right?
Correct.
Correct, yeah. That's all I have. Oh, all right. Well, anyone else? Councilmember Marsholsen?
One follow-up question. When we're talking about the redevelopment of the site, any new developments going to have parking requirements for the development? How many of these parking garage spots are available to be used to offset parking on the site?
Mayor, Mayor Protam, Councilmembers, Councilmember Marsholsen, that'll be part of the negotiation conversation that will be occurring as the development moves forward. And then how, how both the planning department is, they do the council reviews and do that work. And then eventually, it'll come to council for how you want to think about parking there, and whether an off-site alternative works. And you've, you've contemplated that and considered that for other projects in the past. How that's exactly going to work out, we don't know. But it sure seems like if there's 1,200 parking spaces across the street, perhaps some of them may work. And that's what I'm alluding to. But we don't have any assurance at this point between the Arista district and, and whatever that development looks like, how those will be counted, and, and that reference between two adjoining park, or two adjoining property owners.
Thank you.
Any other councilmember questions? All right, seeing none. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2231. Will the clerk please read proposed ordinance by title?
7A ordinance number 2231, authorizing the execution and delivery of amendments for restated annually renewable reserve fund agreement for Arista parking structure with the Arista Metro District.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember, when?
Thank you, Mayor. I make this motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mayor Protam?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Your ordinance, okay, so seeing no discussion, council, please cast your vote electronically. Just once we get that screen, I know. All right, our councilmembers have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously. Thank you all. Thank you both very much. For our final item under action items, staff will provide council with a legislative update. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you. And Ms. Brulyard is making her way down to the podium. Should be a much swifter conversation this evening, Mayor?
Wonderful.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam and councilmembers, Danae Brulyard. Before I jump into the three bills that we'll discuss tonight, I did want to just talk about a few housekeeping items for council. I wanted to mention that the Ponte Busam weekly communication that typically comes out today or tomorrow, they're having some technical and staffing difficulties, but it will come out this week. We're working on it. So I just wanted to let you know if you're watching for that. As a reminder, the session ends on May 8, which means we are in the thick and probably the hardest part of the session. Everyone keeps saying the downward slope, and I would say it's the upward climb. I see Councilmember Wen agreeing down there at the end of the dais. Although most of the bills are in play right now, we are expecting a couple more bills around transportation, maybe some language around taxing or increasing funds for transportation and mobility to come. And then we also know that there will be bills introduced out of the Tax Commission that Mayor Casteratta served on. There were 10 recommendations that came out of that. I've heard rumors that all 10 bills will be introduced before the end of the session. They're going to let them all come into play. Whether that's true or not, who knows? We'll see what happens. But those will be introduced before the end of the session. So right now, it's just a competing and conflicts of calendars. So really, we know, we hear lots of bills dying in committee, and this is when that starts happening, because they can't get committee hearings and get through there with enough time to get before both chambers. So we'll see where we end up at the end of the session, but that's where we are right now. One thing I did want to mention as well is House Bill 241430, which is the 2425 long appropriations bill. So the Colorado state budget, they have a very strict calendar that they keep, keep to. The JBC introduced that in the House, then it moved to the Senate. It has cleared both of the chambers, but with very different bills and amendments. So now it will go to the reference committee for them to try to reconcile the differences between the two chambers on a very tight timeframe. So more to come there, but that's when these bigger bills that have bigger fiscal notes can really start to come through, once they see what the long bill has allocated for legislative efforts for the year. Next slide, please. So first, I wanted to talk about, this is hot off the press. I think it entered, it just dropped within the last 15 minutes. But the transit reform bill that we knew was coming from Representative Lindstedt and Senator Winter just dropped, it's House Bill 241447. I did put a note, so nobody emails. If you click on the link, it's not even up yet with the bill language, because it was just introduced. So hopefully, by tomorrow, you'll be able to see that actual bill. We did meet Planning Director Burton Zetti, Transportation Manager Sarah Grant, and myself met with Representative Lindstedt just earlier today to discuss the bill. Our understanding is this, the bill is introduced is what we saw on the most recent draft. But obviously, we haven't had time to actually analyze to see how that, how that translated to the formal bill. Essentially, what it does is it modifies the composition of the RTD board. It requires CDOT to implement a bus training program. We've heard a lot about the workforce shortage and CDL licensures, and how that's impacted RTD. So it tries to incentivize and increase driver, driver training programs. It also requires transit, transit providers to coordinate with the metropolitan planning organizations, Dr. Cog, for example. And then it also modifies the allowable use of money transferred to CDOT around the redevelopment of the Burnham Yard rail property. And if you're not familiar with that, I wasn't either, I had to look it up. It's an old railroad property in Denver that used to serve as Camp Weld. And so they're trying to revitalize that area. As I mentioned, we met today. We haven't had time to look at the formal bill yet, but we plan on bringing that forward at the next council meeting, which is April 23. Next slide. All right, the second bill we are going to discuss was 1371, more uniform local massage facility regulation. This is a CCI priority bill. We've been discussing it all throughout the session, but now there is really a formal bill taking shape to discuss. Again, CCI has made it a priority. The goal is to address human trafficking. It has been amended heavily as it's moved through committee, and I think Councilmember Henkel emailed council about this earlier. When it was previously introduced, it required all local governments that they had, mandated that there had to be a licensing scheme or structure for massage facilities in, for city counties and city and counties, home rule and statutory. It was amended to instead just require background checks. So it's for all governments. And I put on here that when they say background checks, it is clarified in the bill that it's state and national fingerprint-based criminal history for massage facility operators, owners, and employees. And then it also requires that local governments establish a process that ensures that these are conducted as required in the bill. It does say now that they may adopt a license. So it would be left to the local government to decide if you wanted to license massage facilities. CML is opposed unless amended on this bill, and CCAT is in a monitor, as far as what I could tell on the bill trackers just a moment ago. One thing I would mention for this bill, as we continue to monitor, and I'll look at Attorney Rogers if she has anything to add, is the challenge is, is we don't know how many massage facilities there are in Broomfield. And so to understand the impact to Broomfield, to, to monitor for the clerk's office to set up the process, to have them come in and pay, go over to Broomfield PD to have their fingerprints done, and then review and analyze, and then also review and determine if a denial needs to happen, or what that looks like, is unclear to us, because we just don't have a grasp on how many massage facilities there are in Broomfield. I will mention, it does not apply to massage therapists. There's already a licensing and background check structure in place for that category. So Attorney Rogers, would you add anything to that? Okay. Next slide, please. And then the last bill for discussion tonight is 241235, which is reduce aviation impacts on communities. And I thank you, Councilmember Ward, for bringing this up. It's been amended heavily, so it's a good time to discuss it now, as the bill looks very different than it did when it was introduced. It is currently scheduled for House Appropriations on the 12. It's already gone through two committees. And as I mentioned, there was almost a rewrite, if you look at the bill online and the pre amend, a strike through was introduced, and it was approved. So as currently written, it creates a new tax credit, and also designate specific grant funds for airplane owners that are switching their, their fuel from leaded to unleaded. It also increases the membership of the Colorado Aeronautical Board to include two members from residents that are impacted by airports in their communities. My understanding is that our airport here would be, the community around it would be one of these seats that could qualify if, if a member or a citizen was interested. And then it also adds a member from CDPHC, so the Colorado Department of Public Health, as a non-voting member. It does say in the bill, it's the director or a designee of the director. And then it also requires that the Division of Aeronautics work with CDPHC to continue to evaluate, educate, and provide technical assistance to airport, airports for noise, light, and air mitigation. And one thing I would mention there, in that bill, it also says to encourage blood testing for, for children that live near airports related to lead. CCAT, CML, and CCI, as far as I could tell, have not taken any positions on this bill. And that concludes the staff report.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Brulyard, and thank you for going down to the Capitol to advocate for Broomfield. We'll start with public comment first. If anyone would like to comment on the legislative items, please come on up. Now, I don't see anyone online either. So questions from council are next. Does any member of council have a question, comment, suggestion? Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Brulyard, I just have a couple of questions. First, for the hot off the press 1447, I was down at the Capitol, actually, on Wednesday, just hanging out with Representative Lindstedt, and he let me read the, the bill. So I, I just, as you're going, as staff is going through this bill, can you guys flag the language that requires RTD to accept any local government's plan for their own essential public transit service? Because right now, under the current RTD Act, local governments essentially have to get the blessing of the, the board. This bill, in, instead of amending Title 30, which is the prohibition that counties can operate their own public transit authority in the Denver metro area, including cities and counties, this would just force RTD to accept that plan. So I just want to make sure that that language is in there. And then as it relates to 1235, I pulled up some of the amendments, and I'm trying to work my way through them. But can you get, do you have a brief overview of just what some of those big amendments are? Like, what are the major changes from what was introduced to what is now on the table?
Can you go back one slide, Curtis, please? Or ahead ones, two slides, I guess. It's the last one. There is one big thing that changed, and let me just hurry and check. I have it in my notes. One, one second. And I'll look to Attorney Rogers as well, if she has something to add on this. But my understanding that one of the big amendments, so the grant funding and the tax, income tax credit was part of the original bill and still stands. But it was around the certifying the requirements of any aviation easement or contracts that they've entered into, was a large concern, not just for Rocky Mountain, but for all of the airports, and something, I think, from their legal teams that they got concerned. So that was the big chunk of the bill that, that was amended, is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Councilmember? Councilmember Marsholsen?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick questions. On the RTD bill, I know you said you hadn't, we hadn't really looked at it yet, but do we know what the composition of the RTD board is being changed to under the bill?
Councilmember Marsholsen, it's, it goes down to seven. So currently, it's a 15-person board. It goes down to seven, and it's a mix between, I think it's two appointments by the governor, approved by the Senate, some district appointments, and then two at large, I think, is where they landed. But it's seven total. So it's a, it's a mix of that composition.
Actually, Councilmember Ward knows. I bet he does.
Yeah. So it's a seven, seven-member board, two are governor appointments, and then there are five elected positions. When I read the bill, it was still, three were in district, and, and two were at large, all ranked choice voting. And then there were three non-voting members. So one was either the CDOT director or their designee, and then two were from Dr. Cog. One was a city council member or mayor, and then one was the county commissioner.
Current or former?
Yes. But I, when I was chatting with Representative Lindstedt, there is potentially a push to have the at-large seats transitioned into district seats sometime in the future.
Thank you.
And then two questions on the massage bill. Trying to understand what, what the amendments you were mentioning. One of CML's opposition was the fact it would, it would, it would have required all local governments to establish a license program. That's been amended out? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. So it used to be a shall require a business license for massage facilities, and now it's a may.
And, okay. And then the background checking, is that only if you, if you do, do a license? Or is that everybody has to do the background checking?
All local governments have to do the background check, which is the challenges for, as I mentioned, around, we don't know how many are in Broomfield.
And is it still, this is again, one of CML's oppositions, is it still every employee of a massage place, like even the, the receptionists and the secretaries, not just the, the actual people giving massages?
They changed the definition and the amended. I don't know if you have that language up, Attorney Rogers?
Yeah, they, they accepted, or the definition of employee doesn't include janitorial staff or other staff that has no interaction with clientele.
But if you're the receptionist at the front desk, you have interaction with clientele.
But you're not touching them.
Yeah, that's-
Yeah. Hold on.
I would guess.
So unless you have like a pinch hitter massage therapist.
Where she does both.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
So as, as Nancy's finding that, Councilmember Marsholsen, regardless, since we don't license them, we don't, we wouldn't have any idea.
But we'd still be required to background check?
Well, require, who, I mean, again, require who? Because we don't, I mean, because we don't license it. And, and when we checked with PD about, do we have issues with our massage? And, and the, and the answer was no. We don't. So.
So it's, it's, it, an employee is not an independent contractor who performs janitorial services or other routine facility maintenance services for a facility and has no contact. So it's, it's not, actually, it's even more limited than I had thought in my first reading. It's, you have to be an independent contractor, janitorial services.
If you're just a janitor, but you work there-
If you're employed by the facility, and the, to, to your discussion with Manager Hoffman, it's, it's incumbent on the operator, the owner, or the employee to come to the local government to say, I work at a massage facility. My boss told me I need to come over and get background checked to adhere to the state law. And that's where, I mean, communication is going to be hard on that point. Like, how do we let community members know that this law is in effect? I mean, hopefully, the trade groups will help. But it's, that part is going to be challenging, and is a lot of unknowns.
Is there anything in the bill that would put any penalties on local governments for not setting up a system to have the background checks done?
Well, we have to set up a process. That's the mandate now. So there is no penalty, though, that, that if, if we miss somebody, if somebody was supposed to be licensed and they didn't, that would not land on Broomfield.
There's no liability, then?
Yep. Because there couldn't be, because we don't know how many there are.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. That, that's a lot to ponder. Councilmember Henkel?
Thank you, Mayor. That's part of the problem, I feel. And I know you asked for comments, too. So it's part of the problem that we don't know. And I really want to just put out there that the Denver area sex trafficking ring was busted in 2022 in Jefferson County. Another ring was busted in 2020 after a year-long investigation involving six parlors and seven indictments. So if we have more awareness, it doesn't mean that we don't have this problem now. It means maybe we could have the problem in the future. And what this does, and what massage parlors, and what I've learned in the session, I was, I was during, I was in the-
during, I was in the transportation housing hearing, and I feel like what we need to do is just establish this uniform, the FBI actually wants it to be done. They said, well, you have to make a statewide uniform policy, because they rely on us and just the system to be disorganized and not talk to one another. So the FBI says you guys need just a uniform policy. So it clarifies a bill that already passed in 2022, but what this does, then, it requires them, and they pay for the, they pay for the background checks. We're not paying for those background checks. If that clarifies anything as well. And it just really, what massage parlors do, and what I learned during the hearing by a lady who was sex trafficked herself, she said they relied on their bosses, you know, getting caught maybe in one area and they moved to another, and there's no cross-communication through the FBI. And so it prolongs their imprisonment. And she said a lot of times, too, they don't know that they're actually being imprisoned. They have a lot of people coming here from other countries, and they'll say, I promise you, you're going to make a lot of money. And what they do is they instead entrapped them into those instances. So there's a lot of immigrants that are involved in this process, a lot of women, a lot of children, and I don't see it as a heavy lift if we're going to, you know, make a movement towards human trafficking. This isn't going to end at all, obviously. We have a much bigger issue to deal with in the Denver area that I'll speak to probably at another date, but it just makes sure that we're working with the FBI to catch who we can, and I think it's worth it if we, if we, you know, set up some sort of structure. But I didn't even bring this up, because I asked, actually, Attorney Nancy Rogers last summer about this, because this is supported by the metro area county commissioners as well. We normally don't take stances on legislation or any ideas like that, but we did on this one and CCI as well, and I had to vote abstain on a human trafficking bill, which is, you know, I don't know, near and dear to my heart. My daughter was almost kidnapped out of my car by gunpoint, and I really feel really compelled to say, hey, let's at least make this step, and it seems pretty minimal in my eyes, so.
All right, thank you. Next is Councilmember Lim.
Yes, I guess I had a question about what happens after the city would run the background check. So, you know, what, what are, I'm not sure what kind, I mean, is it, will it be clear, whatever results come back from the background check, that this person should not be an employee of a massage facility? Does, who enforce, who takes steps to enforce the results? I don't understand what happens next.
I'm going to go first, just from a PD process perspective. So there's two things that we don't know how big a lift this is. So to say that it's not a big lift, we don't know how much. So for our fingerprinting, we have volunteers that work at the police department that do the fingerprinting for, for all of the employees outside of the police department. So anytime that we bring somebody new on, they do the fingerprinting. So while that administratively is not a, that in and of itself isn't a lift, but when you get to your conversation, Councilmember Lim, it's, when we send it off to CBI, CBI has to have a landing place. So it certainly doesn't go back to the massage place. It comes back, and then it has, this person has been arrested on this, this, and this. Does this, this, and this subject that person to not being in a massage parlor environment? Or was it theft and tickets, right? So who's the decision-maker when those come back from an administrative perspective? It's not the person that's taking the fingerprints, right? So it's another one of those bills that, for our police department, it is another one of those, what do we?
Oh, an unfunded mandate.
Yeah, and, and, and it, and so I don't want to have a conversation about value, because that's not our role, but it is our role with regards to what kind of lift it is, particularly for our police department. And that is something that we, we've got to really, we've got to understand what that looks like.
Well, and I guess my question is, that does, I did read quickly through the bill, but does the bill specify what disqualifies someone from being an employee, then? And is that the, is there anything in the bill that is the criteria that the local government is supposed to use to evaluate the results of the background check?
So as a local government that doesn't have a licensing scheme for massage facilities, we would do nothing more after the background check. We would, as Manager Hoffman mentioned, send it off to the state, where the bill talks about sharing it with local law enforcement, and there is a provision in the bill that says no person who has, it either doesn't get their background check or has certain flags on their background check, and there is some designation of what that is, should be employed at a licensed facility. And then later on in the bill, it talks about how a local government can impose penalties through our own municipal code if we wanted to. I mean, the bill even as written, it is, has the most effect for those communities that have licensing scheme, because then you do have some, something to do with that background check. Here, we are sort of that intermediary between the employee and this state requirement. And like Ms. Bulliard said at the beginning, that's where a lot of the unknowns are. Like, where, where does our clerk send this form when she's done? And that's not entirely clear in the bill yet.
And so we have no idea. We don't even know where we send it off to, much less if the state is going to be the enforcer, then, if they are going to review this?
Right, right.
Okay.
I mean, the hope is, as Councilmember Henkel mentioned, there is an intent in the bill that there's some sharing of information, so that when, that when we share, I know that, for example, Lakewood has a really robust licensing scheme for massage facilities, that if we share it with, if our police department knows, maybe they can share information with Lakewood's police department. So there is that encouragement on sharing, but it is hard to tell from the bill what the mandates, what the process mandates will be going forward.
Okay. If, if I want to give this the benefit of the doubt, that this would get worked out, is there any precedent for, you know, thinking, we passed this bill at the state, and it was kind of vague, but, you know, we worked it out with some, I mean, I'm just open to that possibility. Does anyone know a precedent for that? As far as, you know, we had to do a background check on anything, and then we, and we, we passed it to the state?
I think from a, there's precedent settings that have various levels of applicability. So there's a lot of precedent setting with new licensers, marijuana. There's, you know, again, that's kind of the, that's, that's why the old adage that Ms. Bulliard and I, we laugh about now, it's nice to have somebody to laugh about it with, that she actually understands it now, which is, nobody's safe when the legislature's in session, which means having these, having the legislation that is, has a positive intent, and how that language starts, and then what the sausage-making process of what it looks like at the end, oftentimes is either so diluted or so many additional amendments, the root of what it was trying to do almost makes it impossible to implement. So it's the, yes, we can do this, and yes, we can do that, and yes, so you get everybody on board. And then by the time you look at it, particularly for, if we don't have a licensing scheme for it, we just have to know going in that with positive intent, we're not going to be, we don't have a sense of what that load is until after it happens. We won't know the impact to our PD until after it happens. We won't know the educational process. So I'm assuming that it'll be our responsibility to be educating the licensing, the massage places, and then enforcing if, in fact, when they come back and they have on the verge, I mean, again, just from the practical nature, Councilmember Lim, when you get these background checks back, we don't have any sense of who's going to have the fidelity of making those decisions, right? So it comes back and it's a, they have a felony, menacing, right? So that it involves another individual. Do we then feel compelled to have our police officer go to the massage parlor place and let the owner know? I mean, again, so the only reason I say that is, is we have to, we have to know that we don't know all that. So the decision is being made to essentially enter into a process to do the licensure. Otherwise, what's, what's the constructive outcome of the bill?
Thank you for answering my questions.
All right. Next is Councilmember De La Dio.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of questions on the Aviation Impacts Bill. So one of the things I saw is that it says the appointment process by the governor should prioritize individuals trained as pilots, not trained as pilots, but in the direct path. What does prioritize typically mean? I'm kind of looking for a shall, should distinction here.
Is that a trick question?
No, that is an honest, what, what should I think when I see that word? Like, yeah.
I can't.
I'm super excited to see how Ms. Bulliard answers.
Sorry, I didn't, didn't mean to throw you a curveball, like.
No, that's okay. So prioritization is listed in several of the bills you are monitoring, and each conversation, it's been used in a different way. So everything in the context of this bill has just been to, right, give tax, the income credits, the grant credits to anybody that's moving away from leaded fuel. So how that prioritization actually comes into, there's no shalls behind it, and they will say they want to keep it flexible at the same time, right? So encourage and flexible, so that they can move funds and money as needed, but I don't know, Councilor, Manager Hoffman, if you'd add anything to that?
It depends on who you ask.
All right. Well, I appreciate that. I appreciate, it's good to know if something's a shrug, if it's truly a shrug, right? What we're getting into here. Because I do, I mean, I do like the idea. I just, my, my concern is prioritizing people in the direct path of flight. I'm wondering if, would someone in, say, a Skystone actually have a reasonable chance of being appointed, and it sounds like we don't know, right? I kind of, I would love for there to be more teeth. That doesn't, sounds like a good step, but would love for there to be more teeth behind this. And then the other one is, so what power does the Colorado Aeronautical Board have? And the reason I'm asking this is because I'm a little bit concerned that this will turn into another noise roundtable, where, again, great to vent, but, again, where's the teeth behind it? Do these people actually have the authority to mandate or push for certain things? I want a sense of that.
So I did a little bit of research on it, but I am not an expert. So if there's, I know Manager Davis has been involved, but essentially, it was a statute that was created in 1988, and it's been a seven-board member since then, and they're responsible for the aviation development in Colorado. So that was the charge they were given from the legislative mandate, and the members of the board are supposed to represent specific statewide interests. Now, how that is an actual application, I don't know, so sorry for the brief answer, but hopefully that helps a little bit.
Again, I appreciate, and I don't know, and we really don't know. So I guess that is a little, so it sounds like this is a step in the right direction, and I do really have a lot of concern for our folks, especially in Skystone, who are really impacted by this. I mean, I would love to see us at least keep an eye on it and push it forward. It doesn't do enough, is what it sounds like, but we, I really hope that we can make tiny baby steps in the right direction here. So thank you for answering my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to discuss more on HB24, the Uniform Local Massage Facilities Regulation. Obviously, this is a very complicated bill, and I think that it reflects on a serious, you know, crisis that we have with trafficking. So I guess to start off with, my question is, since this is both a regulatory bill and one that introduces licenses for local governments, and, you know, this bill talks about how the county municipality has to essentially coordinate with itself to regulate, and we touched a spot earlier, but how would that reflect the Brimfield status of being both a county and a city?
Councilmember Lynn, they actually fixed the definitions of the early draft of the bill, because, and Brimfield finds itself in this position often, where they'll say, you know, city, county, town, and they exclude city and county. So we're definitely included in the definition of local government. So we're covered by the bill. When it has something like it does in this bill, that any municipality located in the county shall work with the county, that just doesn't apply to us. I mean, we're sort of, we're that one entity, so we don't have to worry about that.
And another question is, you know, since this bill, you know, it also, you know, it basically calls for, you know, making that every operator employee submit background checks. Are there other cases of this happening in other industries that isn't, I guess, massage parlors or massaging? Is there, do we require, like, dispensaries or anything like that? Like, what is, what is an example that is similar to this particular bill?
Marijuana has a background check, but we also have a license, you have to have a licensing scheme to go on with marijuana to regulate it in your community. Yeah.
Obviously, my questions are kind of generalizations, because this is a very, you know, strict bill, so I'm curious to see where this bill goes, because I would never imagine the bipartisanship that we're seeing with this bill. So I appreciate your work with researching this, and definitely will keep an eye on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I have a question on the Uniform Massage Facilities Bill as well. So this is the part that I can't get past. I understand, I understand the concern that's trying to be addressed here, but if you have any illegal operation, you're not actually going to, those people are not going to get fingerprinted, you're only going, you're only going to have some people get fingerprinted. So if I could, the part that I need to get past is how does this process, because you have to have some people fingerprinted, but you're going to have, obviously, anyone who's being held against their will is not going to be fingerprinted, if they have somebody with a known background that isn't going to pass this background check, they're not going to go down there. So I'm just like, if we can get past that piece, so that we have all that information in place when the sting operation occurs, that you actually, that is actually useful and successful, and you would find the people, then it's a whole lot easier to understand why we would do this. I don't know if we have those answers, but that's one part I'm struggling with, so thank you.
Councilmember Anderson, it goes, it goes back to kind of the, the original tree, right? Which is, we don't know how many we have. We don't have a mechanism to find out how many that we have. So if we had four come in and five of the people that worked in the four were fingerprinted, we wouldn't know how many were, we wouldn't, we just, we just, we don't know. We wouldn't, we wouldn't know, because we don't know, we just, we don't know. We don't know, we don't know. And so we wouldn't be able to distinguish, well, they have six employees and only four have come in. We wouldn't be able to identify that either.
So I guess, like, follow-up to a question to that, is there a way that we could ask the bill sponsors, like, what is the plan for, like, is we going to have that information next time? Is, if we, if we do go down this, this process? Because if, if you could actually, by doing this background check, not knowing that you don't have everybody fingerprinted, but that would actually help in the sting operation, that would make it, we should, then. But if, but if there's no explanation of how it's going to work, I think we're doing, doesn't feel like it's going to be successful. So I guess I'd like to better understand what the next step is, that they're anticipating, and how this is going to work, so.
Maybe if I can just add, it is not scheduled right now for its next hearing as of today, so there is time. We, if it's the direction of council, for us to have a follow- So there is time. We, if it's the direction of council for us to have a follow-up conversation on amendments, and that's the direction of the body, we can, we can do that as well.
All right. Anything else, Councilmember? All right, thank you. Next is Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, just a quick comment regarding the subject du jour of the massage, I didn't realize we didn't, honestly. I would encourage us to lean in instead of lean out on this issue. Because we have a history in this region of sex trafficking in massage parlors, a major bust in the region. If you Google Broomfield Massage Parlor, you're going to see an arrest for prostitution when a spa was raided here in Broomfield. So this stuff happens behind the scenes. I remember I lived in a community where a restaurant was busted and they had 12 people, immigrants who were basically being enslaved. Kept in the second floor, working on the first floor. This stuff happens right before us. We have no idea unless we are licensing and regulating and rating. And this doesn't sound like, quite honestly, that huge a lift. I know Denver just started doing a licensing program. I think you said Lakewood has a one, and to answer Councilmember Wynn's question, every bud tender who works in a dispensary has to fill out a state application and get fingerprinted. And I think, I don't know if the law was changed, if you ever had a marijuana conviction, you're not allowed, or maybe there's a period which you can get that expunged. But it doesn't strike me at the top that it's that difficult. We already have a licensing authority, you check, add a box to check the business. It's their responsibility to license their workers and if they don't, then we can enforce the law if there's a problem. So it doesn't strike me, we should know frankly, for that business, how, what businesses are in our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to move to support House Bill 241235.
Thank you. That is the Aviation.
Yes, Aviation Impact.
Thank you. Just haven't committed them all to memory. Is there a second? Councilmember DeGudillo.
So seconded.
Is there any discussion? And Mayor Protam Schaaf.
Thank you, Mayor. So I debated, but now that it's motions before us, I'll comment on this bill. So the, it seems that the legislators, legislators funding a lot of projects using federal or using tax credits. And this is yet another bill, you know, it seems the budget is tight this year, so the legislature is going to have to negotiate which bills that they are going to fund and based upon whatever priorities. With that said, the fiscal note on this bill seems relatively low. However, it does move the needle on the transition of airplanes use currently using leaded fuel to unleaded fuel. So that part right there is enough for me to support this. But also, you know, I can't wait to see, you know, the addition of the two more voting members on this board to see how that changes that conversation there. It's, it's definitely aviation friendly, the board is. And so having some affected communities being voting members on there, it does change the dynamics of that board. So I'm interested to see that. So thank you for making the motion, Councilmember.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Not seeing any. So council, please cast your vote on this motion electronically to support aviation. Take a support position on Aviation Impacts. Is your thing working? How do you vote, Councilmember Wynn? Yes, okay, thank you. So you entered that one. All councilmembers have entered, oh, Councilmember Leslie. Turns green on my screen. Oh, there we go. All councilmembers have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes 10 to 0. So thank you, council. I guess I, did anybody else have first round comments on these? I just was kind of curious, back to the massage facilities. Why is it just this industry that's being? Put the spotlight on? Is that one that's notoriously known for that? Because there's, like Councilmember Cohen alluded to, it happens in restaurants. It could happen in other types of salons or other types of businesses that aren't being put under the same strict standard. So why just massage facilities? And does that include like massage envy?
Yes.
In the places that do facials?
It could if they have massage. I was in Aurora when Aurora instituted its massage therapy license. And, and as Councilmember Cohen mentioned, there might be other industries where this occurs. This is an industry where this definitely occurs and it, and it is a known problem. I remember going to conferences on licensing issues related to policing and massage, talking about massage therapy businesses, especially illegitimate ones, was a big issue. And I, at CML a couple of years ago, and some of you might have attended it, Lakewood did a great presentation on, on why they decided to start licensing massage parlors. And some of the success they had in helping break down some of those, those illegal activities. At the same time though, to your point, Mayor, Lakewood also instituted a hotel and motel licensing scheme for the same reasons. Say, all the illegal activity that was going on in small motels. So it does happen in other industries, but it does definitely happen in this industry.
And in your opinion, do you think this bill? Does something though, without a clear path to enforcement or any type of accountability, I guess, you know? What, what's the, it doesn't seem fully based, I guess, in my opinion, because without the licensure, then it's really just, okay, we're, we're doing these background checks. But then again, what constitutes you're not employable or?
I do have that list. I was able to find those crimes. It's, it's prostitution, human trafficking related offense, money laundering, or similar crimes to money laundering, or being a registered sex offender.
Oh, okay. Well, that helps clarify. Thank you. All right. Well, Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you, Mayor. Should I make my motion? Because I wasn't here the last time when we did all that stuff.
It's, it's on the memo, the, what you should say, it says, I move that council take a support, oppose, amend position on bill number.
Yeah, I moved to take a support position on House Bill 241371, more uniform local massage facilities regulation. And I just want to add, could I add now? Okay, I think if we lean into a yes and support, what this does is just, this just creates some sort of statewide framework. It doesn't, we've heard from other counties where they said, we actually want a lot of control over this. And they're like, we really want more local control. And so we have heard of departments wanting to do that. We could also mimic what other people do to the degree that Broomfield needs to do it. So all this does is provide the framework of which we can either help and support other counties. Because right now we can't, we're not really doing anything in this area. And it is, like I said, like to Councilmember Cohen's statement, that it is kind of scary that we don't know, because we should know. And I don't want to be on the news. I'm sure all of us don't want to be in the news for having something like this happen. Just because we didn't know what to do with the licensing when all these other places, like you mentioned, Attorney Rogers do have this licensing structure. But it wasn't a mandate and it wasn't a telling us how to do it. It's, you know, supporting, you know, the framework that possibly other people have too, and maybe mimicking it to the degree that Broomfield needs. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So is there a second? Councilmember Cohen. Second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. I support the intent of the bill. I think we should do everything we can to. Catch and prosecute human traffickers. That's a deplorable act of abuse and we should definitely do what we can on that. This bill's a mess, though. It, it puts a, it should be amended. I, I would support an amended position. I can't support a support position. And I'm going to say one other controversial thing. Attorney Rogers mentioned the list of people that would be excluded and frankly. There are, there are people who are human trafficked, trafficked. And there are consensual sex workers who this would criminalize, and I think we do overly criminalize a lot of things. So I don't think that that should be in the bill. I, I, we, it should be amended. I don't think it should be.
Point of order, I actually think that they did take prostitution out because I think.
You have to wait for me to recognize you for point of order. So, yes.
Yeah, I think they did actually take that out, I think, because they discussed that during the bill, the bill reading. I think the prosecution was removed.
Thank you, Councilmember Henkel. And I'm sorry, I, I was probably too flippant in just saying prostitution. It's not the felony or misdemeanor of prostitution, it's solicitation of a prostitute.
That changes, that, that changes my position on that position, point, but I do think it still should be amended. I think that the, the very minimum, the required background checks should be limited to those communities that institute, choose to institute licensing schemes. I don't think it should be blanket to everybody. That's where I would come down on it. So I'd support an amended position, but I'm, I'm not going to support the support position.
Thank you. Next is Council, Mayor Protam Schaaf.
Thank you, Mayor. So I did have a question on this bill. So it sounds like the state already has a licensure program for massage therapy businesses. Is that correct?
Massage therapist is a licensed profession under the Department of Regulatory Agencies.
Okay, all right. So it seems, it seems like the state could go all in on this and do it themselves. Is that, I mean, they have the ability to do this program, require the background checks, do it at a statewide level as opposed to requiring the local governments to do this?
They could, but and in the bill, it references this, how they see licensing, business licensing as a, as a matter of either local or mixed state and local concern.
So they don't want this state control?
No.
Oh, okay. All right.
At the licensing part of it.
Well, and I think that that's, I mean, that's what's interesting is that the, the sponsors remove the mandate. But the way in which the bill is written, it's going to lead towards that mandate in the future. That, that local governments, you know, or local governments do have that business licensure requirement. And to Councilmember Marsh Holson's point, it's just, it's, it's written in such a way that it leads towards that point because it's not going to work in that current format. So this would be one in which the, the state could take full charge of and, and really, you know, assert their statewide. You know, issue and, and really lead on this program. But it sounds like that they're going to push this towards the local governments to, to do and to come up with the, the funding mechanisms to do this. So I, I, I don't support the, this bill as it's written. I, I don't know if it's, you know, necessarily to get into the amend piece of this as our, our Broomfield resources. But I, I don't support a support position. We don't, we don't have a position on CCAT. This is not one of our areas of focus.
Okay, just curious. Thank you. Councilmember Wynn.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, when we think of massage parlors and folks who work and are employed by massage parlors. It is very overly represented by Asian Americans and especially immigrants from Asia. And so I, I, I look at this bill and I find a lot of very conflicting language. And similar to what my fellow Ward One Councilmember Marsh Holson. I, as written, I can't really think I could support this bill just because it's not written enough where it, it supports the small business folks who will be impacted. And, you know, I understand and I recognize that there's an element of addressing human trafficking. And I know that it is relevant in this profession and it's, you know, as Councilmember Cohen mentioned, there was a story about Broomfield that had that. And I recognize that it needs to be addressed. But as written right now, I just, I find there's a lot of flaws within the current language of the bill. And ideally, I hope the state or other, you know, regulatory bodies would address it in a more cohesive manner. Rather than giving us a lot more questions as how this would impact municipal and county regulation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmember discussion? Councilmember Anderson.
I'll just really quickly share that I would support the amended position as well to work out some of the, those, those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so we're voting on the support position for House Bill 1371, more uniform local massage facilities regulation. Councilmembers, please cast your vote electronically if you can, and let me know if you can't. I said no, that's false. I didn't know for Councilmember Wynn. And all councilmembers have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on screen. It is a tie, but it doesn't matter in this case because we'd need a two-third threshold of seven votes in support to take a position on this piece of legislation. So I don't even have to weigh in. Did you want to, Councilmember Henkel, go for an amend?
I'll move for an amend. I would just like for people to be clear about what they're amending because the reason why I didn't bring it forward is because. We had concerns about, you know, the overly structuring of, of making this licensing structure, which we do locally. We do locally for other things. So I'm a little bit. I'll be quite frank, I'm a little annoyed that, that we didn't say that licensing for marijuana needed to go to the state, you know? If we want to, you know, take control of things locally, we should. But I'll move to, to, to amend.
All right, is there a second? Councilmember Cohen. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilmember, it's still up. Anybody have any discussion on amend? All right, so then let's go ahead and vote for an amended position on this piece of legislation. Councilmembers, please cast your vote. That's a yes for Councilmember Wynn. I feel like an auctioneer. And Councilmember Cohen, just waiting on you, didn't hit. Highlight. Thank you. All councilmembers have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. The amended position passes nine to one. Thank you all for that discussion. Anything else on the legislative end? Councilmember Henkel.
Yeah, thank you. For those who wanted to, you know, give an amendment, like Councilmember Marsh Holson, anyone else, just please let us know. Is that, you know, we talked about this at CCI and at MAC as well. If there are amendments, they, the bill sponsors would love to hear it. Thanks.
Well, CML said oppose unless amended. Did they have amendment language?
It was the.
Go ahead, Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Sorry, thanks, Mayor. So there was two main amendments. One, it was the discussion of, at that point, it was still that all, when we had this, sorry. When we talked about this in executive committee, it was still that every. It was a mandate to do a licensing scheme. So they wanted that out of it. There was also the question about the, about what we talked about, about the, the background checks. But then the other one was that it applies to every single employee of the business rather than just those people who actually. Yeah, actually interact with people, the secretaries, the danders, all that. So that was one they also wanted amended out.
Got it. Okay, well, thank you for that. So any other legislative items to, for us to address tonight? Councilmember Lynn.
Well, I just wanted to note in the CML update that came up yesterday, they said that they're working. To amend the massage facilities bill so that it's only required that municipalities with ordinance, with. Only municipalities that have licensure would have to do fingerprint background checks. Oh, that, I mean, that it's, I just copied it from the CML update yesterday.
That's news to me.
That's what it says. Although the bill was amended, CML is still working to remove language requiring all municipalities to background check individuals associated with the massage facility. And require only those municipalities with ordinances to conduct fingerprint, fingerprint background checks. And eliminate any remaining mandated licensing requirements other than background checks.
Thank you for that update, Councilmember Lynn.
I don't know where that, I don't, that's just a proposal. I don't know where that's going, but.
Well, we're going to monitor it in our amended position and I just want to thank you very much, Ms. Brouillard. This has been quite the effort, this session, and we appreciate you. And that completes our discussion and votes on pending legislation. There are no requests for future action this evening. So is there any other business to come before the council? I just want to remind everyone that next Tuesday is our study session on the Charter Review Committee's recommendations. So we will be discussing in depth what, which ones to put forth on the November ballot. So tune in and we'll see you next Tuesday. There being no further business, the council meeting is adjourned. Thank you.